Commissioner White, I just have a minute. But thanks, everyone, for being here. I'll call the meeting to order and I will go ahead and just turn it over to our county manager to get us started.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So today, we have the fire chiefs presenting and Tim is going to actually lead us off talking about our chiefs.
All right, commissioners, we have a presentation that we're going to walk through briefly before we get started. That said, the purpose of today's session really is to hear from the fire chiefs that are requesting tax rate increases directly. So the majority of this time will be spent hearing from them. But before we do that, I wanted to give sort of level set a little bit. So I'm going to walk us through this presentation. Stop me if you have any questions. This clicker is going to work. All right, so our agenda today, we'll provide a quick summary of where we are with the fire districts, the processes went through this year, also some data that we found, the majority of the time talking to the chiefs. But in terms of our summary document, so I wanted to be clear on what our timeline was this year. So this year, on March 15th, we made revenue projections available to the fire chiefs. This is also what we did with schools and some of our other stakeholders. On April 30th, any fire district that was requesting a tax rate increase submitted that to the county, of which we had six. On May 6th, each of the fire districts who are represented, and thank you all for joining us today, met with our new county manager, Avril Pender, to discuss kind of in general needs for the fire districts as a whole, but also get to know the new county manager. May 10th through 14th, we did detailed budget reviews with those who were requesting increases. So we had six one-on-one meetings with the county manager and staff, which included Matt Evans and myself, to go through the details of those requests and to sort of substantiate them. That places us here today, May 21st, which is our working session. The chiefs are represented and we will hear from them today. In terms of a quick overview, this is a map to help us sort of understand where the districts are. The districts that are requesting increases are highlighted in red. As I said earlier, we have six out of 20 fire districts requesting rate increases. Those increases range from one cent to three cents and for a total annual increase of about $1.5 million across the districts. As a reminder, a penny varies substantially based on property values, so one cent in one district is not the same as in another district. As a reminder, we've showed you all this before, but you know, the intent is to remind us that fire districts are clearly important from the services they provide, but also from a fiduciary and financial standpoint. And as you can see in the table, if we look at the fire district operating budget of about $34 million across all fire districts and compare that to our general fund budget, it would be about 10%. As a reminder, for those that are not familiar and the media and folks in the room, you know, fire districts are not a part of our general fund budget. However, as we compare, we can see that it clearly would be a significant portion if it was. For that reason, we believe it's important that we have a good relationship with fire districts, make sure that we're reviewing and vetting budget requests and ensuring financial accountability. At the end of the day, these are public dollars regardless of whether or not they're managed by a different entity. This table, there's a lot of information on here for you to process. What you need to know is that we provided tax rates from fiscal years 18 and 19 on the far left. The green highlighted items, those are the fire districts that are requesting increases this year. That gray box right in the middle, that's the original requested FY '20 tax rate increases for the six fire districts that are requesting increases. The reason I'm showing that to you is because two of those fire districts have reduced their increases since their original submissions. The FY '20 revised request, which is that fourth column, those are the fire district requests that we're currently talking about today. The two that did decrease their requests for your notes are ANCA and Fairview. In terms of what the dollar value amounts to, the very far right column shows you what the requested tax rate increase relates to. So you can see ANCA as an example is about $398,000 as an example. In total, this is a $1.5 million increase across the six districts. I should also state that in your packet, you have a copy of this presentation, if helpful. Shift gears a little bit. We presented this information to you in the past, but one of the things that Avril asked Matt and I to do is begin to look at the financial data that we do have from the fire districts and to look at the metrics that exist and to give us a sense of financial health. The ratio that I'm showing you here is the operations ratio and all that is, is an assessment of revenues versus expenditures. So on the far left, you have a fiscal year 17 operations ratio compared to on the right, where you have a fiscal year 18. On the right, the green bars indicates someone who's requesting an increase in their tax rate for this year. And you'll see that there's a yellow line that goes right down sort of right. Anybody above that yellow line is someone that has more revenues than expenditures. So you're not spending more than you have. If you're below that yellow line, that means you're spending more than you have. These are based on financial statements that have been provided to us by the chiefs, but these are audited financial statements. And so as you're evaluating today what you're hearing, I want you to keep this in mind. There's a handful of our districts that are under the operations ratio, so they're not breaking even, they're spending more than they're bringing in. Those are right at the bottom, so you can see there Barnardville and Woodfin. But in general, our fire districts are spending less than they bring in. We put fiscal year 17 on the left, so you can do a comparison. You'll see that some of these districts have made some progress in the last year. If you look at the left, it's pretty easy to tell that we've got five or six districts that were significantly under and meaning they were spending more just two years ago. Any quick questions on that operations metric?
Maybe a topic for when we have more time, but any kind of quick summary on, that seems like very positive development and not unique to one or two departments, but kind of a piece of work. What changed?
Yeah, I think a few things. One, you know, we saw tax rate increases from last year, of course. Two, and the chiefs can correct me, but I don't think they've seen, we presented this data last year for the first time and I don't know that they'd seen that or known that we were looking at this type of information, so I think that probably stimulated some additional action as well.
Thanks.
So I think, you know, and I don't want to get hung up on this either, but it'd be good if there are some that, like on the chart at the right, I don't know if, you know, the only two of them, you know, might need help or six might need help, you know, even though we have the line going this way, you know, to know who would want additional services or additional support to maybe, you know, help the, you know, if it's a cash flow issue.
Absolutely. Thank you. And you know, this is something, you know, we met with the chiefs and we're committed to working with them moving forward as long as they'll sort of have us involved. You know, and specifically, one of the things we want to do is present this financial data more consistently so that folks understand where they're at. This is just one measure, though. So, you know, one measure of the world is how much money you got, how much are you spending? Another metric in the world is, all right, how much are you saving? So this is a completely different question. So this ratio, I have the laser pointer, this is current assets to operating expenses. Again, we're on the left, we're doing fiscal year 17, on the right, we're doing fiscal year 18. And so with this metric, if we're going to sum it up, it's designed to tell us is how much do you have in your savings account, basically? So as we look at this chart, this dotted orange line right up here represents our three-month mark and this yellow line represents our one-year mark. So anybody above the one-year mark basically has in the reserves at least one year's operating expenses. Does that make sense? All these folks right here, we have reserves. These folks right here in the middle that are between the dashed orange and the yellow line, that means they're somewhere between three and a year, so in terms of operating expense. Anybody that's underneath this dotted orange means that they have less than three months.
So you can't look at the one before without looking at this, so you know, if you take the one before, which kind of goes to the, towards the, you know, the comment that I was making and maybe Commissioner Farrelly has too, you lay that with this and you put the other one with this one and then you can really see, you know, who's either, you know, got the right amount or needs help.
That's absolutely right.
It's good information.
Yeah, and you know, I would be remiss if I didn't bring this up, but you know, this doesn't tell the whole story by itself. You might say, hey, you've got a ton of money in the bank, why? And some of these folks are going to turn around and tell you it's because, you know, we're saving up money so that we can do something in the future, the same way we would with our fund balance or our reserves. So that's a part of the story, but wanted to make sure you're aware of it. As a reminder, you know, our own policy for fund balance, you know, 15% gets us about two months of reserves. So you know, we would be under this line if we looked at it. But that said, you know, that is a, it's a different scale, but just want to try to link some of these different concepts. Any questions on this? One discussion and I'll get off this topic. You know, some of the chiefs said, hey, you know, we've got a bunch of current assets, but that's specifically because they're in reserves, to which our county manager responded, well, that's really great, but as long, you need to make sure that there's a board action that takes that current asset amount and puts it in a reserve account. So if you're buying a new truck, buying a new substation, whatever it is, make sure that there's documentation to support how you're going to use it. And so I think that's something we've discussed with the chiefs, just to make sure that their assets look appropriate. Any questions on this metric? All right.
Do you, on that point, like in terms of what the, what the reserves are for, do we have information from each of the districts about sort of what their, each of their specific stories are for why they have the amounts that they have?
We absolutely do and the six that'll present today that have been specifically asked to speak to those. All right, so any other questions on kind of where we're at overall with the fire districts? Any of these measures, this information I've showed you today? All right, so we're going to, I'm going to stop talking here in a minute and we're going to allow the chiefs to present their cases to you. The way this will work, similar to last year, each chief, each district has seven minutes. Last year, we gave the districts five minutes. That was because we had 13 increases and this year, we only have six. And then we're saying roughly three minutes for questions. That's just to keep us on track. We do have a number of folks waiting for additional presentations. The chiefs are going to use budget request template documents. Those are in your files. So they're going to, the same document that they're using to speak to in this meeting is already in your file. It's paper clipped and they look like they're documents. The purpose of their presentation is to talk specifically about the tax rate increase and how those funds will be used. We're not going to get into all the other details of their budget. It's explicitly, if I'm asking for a penny, here's how the penny gets used. To keep us kind of moving along, we're going to present in alphabetical order, so we're going to lead off with ANCA, we'll then go to Fairview, followed by French Broad, et cetera. Again, we've got 10 minutes max for each presentation. I will be timing y'all. Any questions before we get started? All right, I'd invite Chief Beddingfield to come up to the podium and begin your presentation.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and I want to thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak to you today. I want to thank my colleagues for their support and the rest of remaining support staff here, as well as your county finance folks have been a really, really big help in helping us develop budgets and to put this together for you. As Mr. Love mentioned, on behalf of the ANCA Fire and Rescue Board of Directors and our organization, we are asking for a 1.5 cent increase to the annual revenue. This amounts to $398,671. The reason for this, or the majority of the reason for this is because we want to put on some additional staff, looking at putting on two per shift, which is total of the six people. So $354,000 is tallied up for salaries and some employee expenses. In addition to that, just to speak a little bit more on that, ANCA has not put on any staff since 2006, running nine people per shift, and in 2006, we're running about 2,200 calls. The last year, we ran 3,500. So we want to decrease some of the workload on our current staff. So that's the primary reason for the majority of the funds. In addition to $354,000 for the additional people, we're also looking at what it's going to cost to outfit them for personal protective clothing, looking at about $2,575 per person. So that equates to about $15,450. And lastly, we've put all of our personnel in uniforms. We're anticipating about $1,000 per person in uniforms, $6,000 there. So that's most of the employee expenses that are related to this request and the tax increase. There are a couple of other small expenses that we're looking for to try to get a handle on. About five years ago, we replaced all of our computer systems. We want to get those on a recurring basis. We've got two systems that need to be replaced now. We're projecting a little over $10,000 to replace those two business computers. And lastly, last year, we added an additional stall to our substation, our station two. We are just about 98% complete, but we didn't account for epoxying the floor and we want to make sure that that part of the floor is, matches the rest of the fire station. So we're asking $12,549 to epoxy that floor so it makes it standardized, makes it very presentable and makes it a good work environment. As Tim mentioned just a little while ago, yes, we have some extra dollars in reserve. We do, on our financial statements, allocate monies for buildings, allocate money for land acquisition, and we allocate monies for apparatus. None of those monies is enough to do any of those by itself. But we do have some monies allocated for those funds, somewhere around $1.1 million divided up into those two, three, those three categories. In addition to that, we still, on top of that, we have an operating expense reserve. It's approximately 70% of our annual budget to include personnel, maintenance, fuel, and utilities. We're working with the board of directors and they, they actually just approved a contract last night for a new aerial device, which is $1.2 million. So that's getting ready to come out here very soon. So anyway, that's an explanation on our reserve budget. So even though it looks like it's expanded and on paper, there's some future expenditures that are going to be large and are going to be reducing that size fairly significantly within the next year. Want to take any questions?
Chief, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Quick, you know, I'm familiar with your reserve and, you know, I think that given the plans for that community, it's a good idea and it works well for you guys. Y'all have done a good job with it, the board has. Do you think you're going to use a combination of pay and drawing down on that and debt to do some of the things you're wanting to do out there in the future?
Absolutely. I think, I've had conversations with several folks on this panel here. We are now in the process of having a new fire station built. It's in its infant stage, too, so to speak. We have an architect hired. We've got land that was acquired at no cost for a long term. All of these school board property, it's a new intermediate school. So we managed to not have to fund any land acquisitions for that. That said, our current location is not the optimum location for our main station and at some point in the not-too distant future, we're going to be looking for a more central location for that to better distribute our assets and reduce our response times within the centralized district. So we know that that's going to be coming at some point in the future. But as far as the immediate future comes, we're anticipating having a fire station three operational by 1st of August of 2020 at the intermediate school with groundbreaking beginning in July. And I'm going to jump back to the personnel needs here in just a minute, but those folks are actually going to be manning that station and they're also going to be manning the new aerial device that we're anticipating getting in March. Now, I understand that when I originally approached Ms. Avril and Tim and Matt regarding our budget, yes, we were going to ask for three cents, so that's what the board asked me to present to you. But that included some expenses that we were anticipating for the new station and we didn't have a really, really good, solid timeline of when that was going to be finished. The day that we went to visit you, I got that, or the day I actually. So we understand that, so I took all the expenses regarding the ladder truck and regarding the building out of the budget, that reduced it down to the half. That's the reason for that. Now regarding the personnel, as I mentioned, we want to reduce the workload on our current staff. We're running, like I said, about 30% more calls than we were in 2006 and it's a heavy workload. There's just no doubt about it. And we're running with the same amount of people. So that's, that's goal one for the new people. Goal two for the new hires is to prepare them for advanced firefighting operations on elevated, on elevated structures. That comes with a ladder truck. All right, there's a lot of training that requires for, for people to get qualified on doing those types of operations and we want to get that started early while also suffice in reducing the workload on our current staff. So that's the explanation for the personnel being when they are.
This is your two minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
What would the starting salary be? The street salary?
I averaged this out on, these six people are going to occupy, three of them is going to be captains, three of them are going to be engineers, because that's going to be the leaders of this area where we're going to be putting them at in the near future. So they're going to be doing a lot of planning. So I took an average salary of $59,000 for each of them and that come up to the amount that you have here. Some are going to be a little bit less, engineers are going to be making a little bit less, captains are going to make a little bit more. That would be at the start of our payroll now, at our pay scale. Now, if we have some folks who are promoted from within, it may vary just a little bit. That was a general.
Is the 59, is that just salary or is that salary plus benefits?
That is salary and benefits.
Okay, do you have the amount of just what the salary could be?
Don't have it with me, no. But I can certainly get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
And it'll vary for each position.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
Next up, we have Fairview Chief Jones.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you all for allowing us to come and make our presentations to you all today. Fire Department has about three projects, so to speak, that we feel needs to be addressed with our requests. We are requesting to increase our fire tax rate by three cents. Our first and foremost would be to increase the salaries of six of our personnel. Last year, we did receive a tax rate increase of one cent. That, that total brings about 172,000 to our district. With that, our board decided to increase the salaries of our lower tiered employees, basically the lowest paid, to meet the state average that was, the pay study that was released in February of 2018, which basically determined that the average state pay was $31,000, $34,197. That study basically showed that our average firefighter pay was $6,268 below the state average. So what we did was we took roughly, it was about $96,000 to $98,000 and we put into all those salaries. We had some additional needs that the remainder of that 172,000 had to go into some operational portions of our budget. So we had about six positions that were, were not given any type of raise last year. We just didn't have the funding. So basically, 96,000 of that, of the 172, is what we put into that. So 37,580 of that three cents is what we're asking to increase those six salaries. The second item is to hire nine additional firefighters. We've met with each one of you, whether it be a phone, email, or in person, and we give you all our requirements, department insurance, NFPA, all those standards or requirements that we have to respond to a structured fire as far as personnel and staffing. Right now, I provided Ms. Pender with the information from our last DOI inspection from 2017 that basically stated that we were arriving on scene with an average of three personnel per fire. And department insurance requires a minimum of 12 members from our station, not mutual aid, to arrive on scene each and every time we have a structured fire. We were averaging three, so that's where the additional nine comes in. So right now, we actually staff six firefighters and a battalion chief on three shifts. Due to our district size, they also require us to respond three engines and a ladder. So by the time you remove the driver operators from each one of those apparatus, that leaves two people to basically fight fire. There is a rule that we follow. NFPA requires a two-in, two-out rule. That requires two firefighters to do interior attack. There has to, there has to be two firefighters ready, standing outside geared up, ready to go in case something happens to those first two firefighters that went in. The only time we can deviate from that is if, per se, we knew somebody or suspected someone was actually trapped in that, in that house or a structure. Right now, like I said, we're, we're arriving with only two people, per se, to actually fight fire. The, and then the study, that basically, we do have some volunteer members, that's why we averaged three arriving on the scene. So they, they took into consideration some of our volunteers, which, as you all know, volunteer staffing is dwindling just because of the time it takes to actually, to do this job. So out of that three cents, like I said, we were pointing to hire nine additional firefighters. That was going to cost roughly $387,536 and 31 cents. The, the third item that we wanted to address was our apparatus. There again, NFPA sets standards and regulations, so to speak, we need to follow as far as the construction and the years of service for an apparatus. Right now, we have two fire apparatus that according to the NFPA standards is basically 16 years overdue for replacement. So it should have been replaced, two of them should have been replaced 16 years ago. We just did not have the funding. So each one of those trucks is an engine, which this day and time, just kind of an average, I called a few of the manufacturers to just give me a price of what replacing those, and they give me an estimate of just for the apparatus around $600,000 a piece. So in, in our budget projections, you'll see that basically that's allowing enough money. The bank requires us to do about a 10% down payment and then the, out of that three cents, $118,721 is allowing for the 10% deposits for each one of those or down payments and then that would allow us for annual payments after the truck was built or after we purchased the truck. The other thing, that's basically the three main topics that we're addressing with the increase. Just to kind of give you a little history, back in 2013, our board realized that our bylaws had not been amended since 1988. It basically, it made it virtually impossible for us to amend or change or make our bylaws compliant with county contract, state labor laws. You can imagine the laws today compared to 1988. It was so, basically, however they done it in 1988, like I said, it was virtually impossible. We had to basically go and hire a, a third party. We consulted with a third party. We hired this company, they came in and they had to take it before a Supreme Court judge. By the time it was all said and done, that cost our department a little over $30,000. Our budget at the time was not planning for that, so it absorbed that and in with that evaluation, they basically, they, they go through all types of, they're basically, they're the professionals in HR for fire departments, they specialize in emergency services. They came in- They came in and basically told us that we were not paying our personnel with the correct FLSA standard. So we had to change that, and when we changed that, that increased our salary expenses about two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. There again, our budget had to absorb that because legally we had to do that. So it's basically the reasons why we're asking for the amount we're asking for. We have taken numerous steps trying to save money. Just last year, we participated in the county energy assessment, converted all of our lighting to at our main station over to LED, replaced all of our bay doors because basically we were heating fair enough. So all that's been done.
All right, we're at two minutes. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a quick question on personnel. So you're hiring nine, there's no fireplaces or entry positions, basically to be able to meet the needs. So, and are you hiring them? Are you paying them at the level that they need to be paid?
We're basing that upon the twenty eighteen pay study, as far as like the state average. As far as I know, it hasn't changed. It's around thirty-four thousand. It's a change. That's the average starting wage of a firefighter.
Is that with or without benefits or anything?
That's without the benefit. The benefits will be on top of that.
Okay, thanks.
Chief Jones, are all of your folks except for these six at the state requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you're only looking at increasing those six and then everyone will be equalized?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
You just have six right now that's not there, and you're asking for nine more?
That's right.
All right, Chief, thanks. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, we have Chief Matthew Shelton, French Barra Fire.
Good afternoon. We are asking for two cents. We got a penny last year. We were trying to raise our pay to state average. Before last year, we was paying twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars for a firefighter. Was that one cent? From last year, we raised it to thirty-three thirteen. Trying to get them all up to base pay of thirty-three nine for firefighters. Officers will come up to thirty-nine thousand a year. Adding a training safety officer, that position is typically one person. I'm splitting it into two positions, part-time. That equates up to thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. That is the tax pay and everything added to it. Eleven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars for benefits. We're currently looking at starting a 401K, getting everybody on their state pension and stuff like that. We're a small district, nineteen point two square miles, mostly residential. Don't have a lot of commercial. So the total is fifty-six thousand, one hundred dollars, what we're asking for. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got one. Are you comfortable that you're not going to lose the people I know that you're concerned that you're leaving, that you lost a couple of people, and that's got to be hard on you as a department? Is this going to, are you going to be okay with these positions?
If we can get to pay it to state average to match most of the other departments, we can't match everybody because we're small, and give them benefit, I'm pretty positive we'll be able to hold on to them. I mean, they're going to go to other places. They've got state retirement and stuff like that that we can't get into, but did have Matt run a five, six-year projection. We average about a five percent increase every year, so we should be, it should hold.
Thanks. Looks like there's no other questions. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Chief John Coffey from Riceville.
Good afternoon, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, fellow colleagues. I'm John Coffey from Riceville Fire Department, and I appreciate you taking the time to hear our presentation today and hope your approval in this matter to support our dedicated men and women so we may better serve the citizens of Buncombe County progressively and proudly. As you all are aware, the countywide pay study was presented in two thousand and eighteen. It indicated that the average starting wage for firefighters at Riceville Fire Department was approximately eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars below the state minimum average. Last year, we evaluated our staffing needs based on that study and determined we would need to request an increase at one point eight cents in order to meet our strategic goal. However, we were only granted a penny last year. Keep in mind, at the time of our request last year, we were not anticipating the seven K exemption. So that wasn't an unforeseen circumstance where the State Department of Labor advised us that because we were no longer under the seven K exemption, that we would now have to pay overtime after forty hours rather than the traditional fifty-three hour work week overtime thresholds. Normal firefighter schedule, they work two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven hours per year. That's just doing their ten days a month, twenty-four hours at a time for one year. When, under the seven K exemption, they only incurred three hundred and twenty-three hours of overtime per year. Now that we're not under that rule, it's eight hundred and seventeen hours of overtime, just based on their normal shift. However, that penny that we did get helped us get through that unforeseen circumstance. We've also seen an increase in workers' compensation or insurance rates. I'm currently developing a ten-year strategic plan for the fire department that'll help steer our organization progressively and in a fiscally responsible direction to continue our ongoing operation. One of the priorities has to do with stability, and what I mean by stability is stability of our staffing. For a while, we only had two full-time to a shift. This past fiscal year, I've been able to stabilize one of those shifts with having three full-time staff. My goal is to at least have three to a shift. Right now, I'm supplementing those other two spots with part-time, but the thing is, is with part-time, our part-time firefighters work full-time at other fire departments. So obviously, their priorities are with their primary fire department. So there's times where we struggle to try and fill those gaps. So another, our second concern is the current trend in varying and decreasing in volunteering. We are a combination department, so part of our staffing is volunteers that that helps supplement, but that's a national, that's a trend that's on the national decline. All of us are seeing it and feeling it, so we're having, and so now it's becoming common to have to supplement those volunteers that we used to have decades ago with paid staffing. Our goal at Riceville is for efficiency. NFPA recommendations, I'm sure you guys have heard this numerous times, is they would like to see four to an engine. We're not asking for four, but we are trying to just get close to that NFPA recommended guideline. So three, three is what we can handle. We currently have three shifts right now. Like I said, one shift has the three people, the other two shifts, I'm supplementing that third person with part-time. So what we are asking, we're requesting two point five cent increase that will strictly be applied towards wages and benefits. That translates into a hundred and forty thousand dollars. This will allow us to convert the two part-time positions to full-time and bring our current employees up to the state minimum average.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple. So on your personnel new positions, ninety-six thousand, you're converting part-time to full-time?
Yes, sir.
How many?
Just two people.
You say?
Two positions.
That happens. It happens. Oh, gosh. I guess that's all I got.
Okay.
But thank you, Rock, for clarifying.
Hey, I have one question. Maybe this is more for staff. The overtime policy, so that affected all the districts, is that correct?
I believe some of them were already paying that.
Some were doing that.
Yes.
So some are already doing it, and now everyone's following that, and so it's impacting some of the districts differently than others. Okay. Thank you.
Next up, we have Chief Shane Presswood from Upper Hominy.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So as you said before, my name is Chief Shane Presswood from Upper Hominy Fire Department, and we're coming forth to ask for one cent for purchase of our apparatus. But before I get into that, I do want to thank all the commissioner's support. Last year, we did come and ask for two cents. We did receive that two cents. In doing that, we were able to add three full-time personnel. We were able to add benefits that we didn't have prior, and that definitely helped us because in September of last year, we had our DOI ratings inspection. During that ratings inspection, we were able to lower our rating from what's called a split rating, which was a class six, nine, to a class five, nine E. In doing that, with the county water hall and the help of most of the folks here in this room, eighty-two percent of our fire district received a much lower tax rate from a nine, excuse me, not tax rate, but interest rate from a nine to a class five. So we did have a very large savings in that. That being said, during that, it was discovered, and we knew it on the, kind of on the upfront, we didn't know exactly what timeframe we were looking for, is that we were going to have to be replacing some fire apparatus. In doing that, we did not receive all of our DOI points that we could have on fire apparatus. So what we're looking to do is one cent to purchase a new engine. No, Chief John was talking earlier, we're looking, you know, anywhere from five hundred to six hundred and ten thousand dollars is what you're looking at for that, for replacement wise. So we're asking the one cent would fund our loan through Civic Federal Credit Union of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That works out to, let's see if I'm correct, that is three point seven percent interest for fifteen years is forty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars out of the budget. The one cent increase for us is forty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. Now, talking with county staff and with finance, we're looking at, we have what's considered a pretty sizable reserve. That being said, our board of directors is trying to keep that reserve high because we currently have a loan on our building for a little over two million dollars. That loan note was signed January ninth of two thousand and nine. The issue is that loan matures November ninth of two thousand and twenty-four, and we'll either be facing a balloon payment of one point two, one point three million dollars or refinance. Our current rate is three point two five percent. So our board and our treasurer and our office manager have been talking to some banks, and right now, they basically said, rates are high, let's ride it a little bit more and see where we're at. The problem is, the closer we get to that, either A, we're going to have to pay that balloon payment, or during the refinance, we're not going to get the same interest rate we have. Therefore, we know that our payment is going to go up. Our current payment for a year right now is a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, but that could increase significantly with the higher interest rates that we're going to be facing. So due to that, our board of directors has elected to try to keep either a year's operating or a little bit above simply to encounter that balloon payment because we know that that's what's upcoming. But like I said, that being said, that's what our one cent's going to go for is strictly for apparatus. Once again, I want to thank the commissioners for being able to get us the two cents we got last year. That got our staffing levels and our pay levels and our benefit levels exactly where they needed to be. So like I said, they've got to have a truck to ride now, so that's what we're here for. Does anybody else got any questions?
What's a year's operating budget?
Okay, so year's operating budget for us, if we go with, is going to be anywhere from, anywhere from eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, depending on where we're going to be. Last year's around eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. Right now, in the bank, as, let's see, our current reserves are eight hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifteen cents as of last week, is what we have in the bank total, and that's in our savings and checking account.
So the board did discuss making that payment out of that reserve if they wanted for that?
No, as of right now, they're not simply because we don't know what's upcoming with the refinance. So they're trying to hold on to that. I do know that, and talking with county staff, the biggest thing we're doing is, yes, it takes anywhere from eight to twelve months to build that truck. So we are looking, it would be next budget year before we receive that truck because we would start this year on the spec process of it, but we get it anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars savings if you prepay that truck. So we would start, you know, the beginning of the fiscal year in July, we'd start probably in August with securing the financing and then the specking, two or three months to spec the truck, then we would order it and prepay it, and then the truck would be paid. And we'd be making the payments prior to receiving the truck, but then we receive that discount to get a little bit cheaper for our taxpayers as well. So as of right now, they were not comfortable taking, you know, five hundred and fifty thousand out of our current eight hundred thousand and putting towards that truck.
No, I mean the five fifty, I meant the forty-eight.
Okay, the forty-eight, yes. No, like I said, that would be, no, because basically what we're doing, where we're at on staffing right now, we're pretty much staying as close to we can as to, like last year, we were, you know, a little bit higher than what we are this year, but like I said, they would prefer to try to do it this way and do it over the fifteen years.
Cool, thanks. And on the, when you said the building balloon payment comes?
Okay, so that, the note matures on November ninth of two thousand and twenty-four. So we've got a few, yes, we've got a few years out on that, so we can either look at refinancing or build our reserves up to make that balloon payment, depending on what direction the board of directors wants to go.
You got five years, basically?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And are you, so you've got a loan on it now, and you're making payments on that loan. Are you paying down principal or just interest on it?
That, like I said, ours, in the past, they had tried to make an extra payment, especially for the principal. As of last year, we were not able to do that, but that is something the board is looking for, and we're going to be able to do this year. We've got a little bit extra, so we're going to apply X amount that the board votes on towards the principal. They tried to do that towards the end of the fiscal year. If we have any sort of reserves left over, say in fire equipment or something that we did not spend, that is something they want to apply towards the principal.
So you're only paying interest on it now?
Currently, and then anything that's left at the end of the year, the board votes on an amount, they're going to look at paying towards principal.
So that's coming out of your reserve?
That would be coming out of the reserve. That's correct.
So you don't have principal and interest payment at present time?
That, like I said, I'm not on that side of it. So I know, like I said, our current payment that we make, it's divided up monthly, but our year is one thirty-one, seven fifty is what ours, what we pay throughout the year, and it's divided in twelve-month increments.
Well, we sure don't want to put Jones' spot on that. Maybe you can kind of get that information.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, I can get with our office manager and get any information that the commissioners would like on that.
Yeah, just principal and interest payment.
Okay, be glad to do that.
Because twenty-four day old is just an interest payment. You basically still have a lot of money.
Right, right. So like I said, we'll get with my office manager, and I'll get that through Tim and get you any information you'd like on that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anything else? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Our final presentation is Deputy Fire Chief David Barton from West Buncombe.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hope everybody's doing fine. We were, at West Buncombe, are requesting a tax increase of one cent. That would bring us in a hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. Of that, the total amount of it will go toward personnel. We have plans to hire three firefighter positions for our new substation. We are currently building a new substation in the Emma section, and that substation is scheduled right now to be open in October. We're going to transfer some of our current personnel to main station, plus three new positions over to the substation. We'll also be promoting three of our current firefighters up to lieutenant's position. It's a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. We'll cover, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand of that will cover salaries, and part of that will go to benefits too. That leaves us a net of forty-three thousand, I'm sorry, forty-three hundred dollars, and we're going to be taking up the difference of that to promote the lieutenants in our existing budget. As you can see from our summary last year, the, our labor standard act, seven K exemption did affect us also, so we had to absorb a lot of salary increases last year in our current budget. We also got a one cent increase last year, and all of that one cent increase went to increasing our salaries to living wage, as said at that current time last year. We have about nine and a half We have about nine and a half percent of our operating funding as a reserve for future needs if we need it. And we also have a five-year capital improvement plan that has us replacing an engine this year. A QRV to go to the new station, the engine goes to the new station, another engine in two thousand twenty-one, a ladder truck in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and replacements of some brush trucks in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. So we do have that five-year improvement plan in place. The new station, the mortgage payments on that are going to be two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a year for fifteen years, and we're absorbing that in our current budget. Any questions?
What did y'all ask for last year?
One and a half cents, and we only got one.
Yeah, and one is, Commissioner, I want to apologize for that, because y'all kind of got caught up in some discussion, and I think the one and a half would have probably been done, it was just kind of the way we were doing it, and, you know, that will happen again. But does this bring your staff up to where you, you guys are good, you're comfortable?
Yes.
Great.
All right, Chief, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, Commissioners, that was our final presentation from fire chiefs. Just in terms of next steps, you know this already, June sixth, there's a public hearing, June twentieth, budget adoption, hopefully. If there's any questions that you had today, I was taking notes, if there's any additional information you'd like to see related to any of these requests, please let us know. A number of things that were asked today, but we're glad to get that for you.
Tim, I just got a comment, I want to make sure before it gets off my mind, I want to thank all of y'all for the job you do, it's amazing, I appreciate it. And we kind of get caught up in the numbers and the questions, I think that's just part of what we're doing here, our mind is kind of, I don't get on that, but I just want to make sure what was on my mind, and I thank y'all for watching, we appreciate it. All right, thanks.
Hey, Tim, I think those dates may be Thursdays instead of Tuesdays?
Gotcha, what do I know? Please, the next slide.
I ain't gonna be there.
Thank you all for letting me attend your chiefs' meetings, I have learned a lot over the past year and a half about the fire service and what you do, so thank you for sharing that with me. I appreciate it, and I appreciate what you do and your folks do every single day.
Yeah, and I think that Day's Day was representing y'all real well, I'm just saying, I went and got some barbecue, and then make sure they pitch your.
Thanks, sir.
Get some more memories there.
I have one other question. I'm sorry to have asked this with folks right here, but for any of the other districts that are asking for increases this year, just, a lot of them are going for salary and other things, but do any, do any of the other districts expect that any of the increases might be able to result in any reductions in the insurance rates in the district?
We have asked for a new rating decrease. We haven't got the letter saying when, it's going to be, all it tells us is sometime this fall.
Okay, so they're looking at it?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We went through rating last year, and lowered our rating from the five to three, which had, didn't have residential insurance rates much, but it had commercial insurance rates.
Right, right. Okay, great. Well, if there's any other information on that, you know, we would welcome kind of learning about that too, as folks go forward on that. So any additional information, feel free to share with us. Great job, everyone, appreciate the information today.
So I've got, I've got another thing for maybe homework for you down there, I don't really want to put somebody on the spot about principal and interest, but, you know, and the department's going to do whatever they want to do, but we have resources here at the county that can, can help in directing or, you know, reviewing and, you know, maybe making recommendations that might save y'all money, anyone to look at that. So that's, that's the reason for asking those questions. So we might just kind of, just want to make sure that we're providing them the depths of support without getting into their, you know, too much into their business, you know?
That's absolutely right, and that's been a part of our discussion at the past two fire chief meetings, so y'all let us know what you need.
And Commissioner, one of the things that we stress is that we are partnerships. This is a valuable service that they provide for citizens, so we want to make sure that they have the resources they need. So our team, including performance management, including our budget staff, we're available to help in any way, we're working through some issues we have with our radios now, but our goal is to make sure that they have what they need, when the call comes in that they can respond. But we are working through as partners, this is not adversarial at all, this is all a part of the partnership, so thank you for that.
Great. Thank you, chiefs and staff, for joining us today. You're more than welcome to hang around for the rest of the meeting, we're going to shift gears away from public safety topics, we'll be talking on strategic partnership grants and other things, except to y'all, but just wanted to give you that opportunity, if you'd like.
But do not feel obligated.
Really?
You guys are. All right. Thank you. Appreciate you joining us.
They missed, they missed, you said some. Okay. They missed, they missed, you said some.
Right, if you have a problem with that.
Do you may? I don't. You doing all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you for seeing me.
Yeah, from the property area, since it said, like.
Okay.
All right.
Let's go.
All right, so we're going to shift gears here a little bit, we're going to talk about tax collection. So I wanted to give you all a brief update on our municipality agreements. Jennifer Pike was unable to join us today, but she sends her regards. So in terms of a quick overview on where we are, so on January fourth, this board approved the tax collection agreement with the city of Asheville. That was a three-year agreement that we approved. Based on that agreement, we began discussions with our remaining municipalities who we collect for, and offered them an opportunity to renegotiate their tax collection agreements as well. I will give you a quick update on our status there. So in the table, you can see Asheville's complete, the structure of that, as a reminder, was a flat rate of seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, which is about one point three percent. That'll escalate with CPI at two and a half percent on an annual basis for the next three years. Goes into effect on July one, two thousand nineteen. The three remaining municipalities that we collect for, there are other municipalities that we do not collect for, such as Weaverville and Billford Forest. So the Black Mountain Tax Collection Agreement is pending county signature, so this has gone to the board at Black Mountain. Same is true for Montreat, and then finally, Woodfin is pending a town vote. These three agreements are very similar to our former agreements, so they're a percentage of collections, and that percentage is two percent, so that they're on basically the same basis. The reason these three are different than the city of Asheville is Asheville has a significantly larger amount of bills, and the valuation is significantly different, so this became a more equitable method for handling that rate. Pending these final board approvals and then signature from our board, these will also go into effect, ten minutes, on July first, two thousand nineteen. Are there any questions? I'm throwing a lot at you, but it's pretty straightforward. All right, so then, a few other key elements on these agreements, just so you know what we're getting into. These are three-year terms. The reason we're doing three-year terms is our prior year, our prior agreements didn't have an expiration date, and so we're, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years old, and a lot changes in twenty years, as you know. Billing frequency is monthly, so, you know, we send tax collections on a monthly basis. However, we did offer to increase this during peak collection period, so most tax revenue comes in during, you know, January, February, wanted to make sure we were getting that revenue to folks quicker if they wanted it. We're picking up something new called gap billing, I'm not going to get into the details on this, but this relates to statute requirements from the DMV, something that we're definitely going to do more moving forward. And then finally, builds in a structure for special assessments. So no one has said, hey, we're going to do a special assessment in the coming year, but if they do, we wanted a way to collect on the costs associated with it, because it is a bit cumbersome to track and monitor for our tax collection staff. So we've built a way to capture cost on that. What I will leave you with, unless there's any questions, are some stats that I would normally ask Jennifer Pike to review with us, but just wanted to remind us that, you know, our tax collection rate continues to be pretty remarkable. You can see we're over ninety-nine percent, close to a hundred percent in most of our municipalities. Also wanted to give you an idea of the types of collections we're doing, so you can see, you know, business, personal property, individual, personal, public service, real property, to get a feel for these communities and what their makeup is from a residential versus commercial standpoint. So that's pretty much it, do y'all have any questions?
Who's the one person in Montreat that paid their taxes? They were late. Or did we get an address wrong, I mean?
Do you have any other questions? Good deal, so once I have executed agreements, we'll bring them before the board and finalize them, but thank y'all.
All right. I see you going.
You ready?
Nope. That's what I'm looking at.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'll introduce myself so that the people in the room can all be familiar with me and we work together. My name is Rachel Nagard, and I'm Strategic Partnerships Director here for the county, and I'm handing out a piece of paper, and I thought about, maybe I should do some introduction and conversation before the paper comes out, because it will be our focal point. But essentially, our purpose over the next however long it takes, and our agenda is to talk through the strategic partnership grant process for FY twenty, which is the county's sort of flagship funding for nonprofits. I'll be pulling it up on the screen soon. Before I get into the list, I'll talk to you a little bit about what we hope to accomplish today. So this is not the first time we've talked about this grant process together this year, so I haven't brought in the same sort of framing PowerPoint slides and background, but essentially, the strategic partnership grants opened up in an open application to nonprofit organizations, and we asked them to submit proposals aligned with either strategic priorities or goals within the sustainability plan. Those who were submitted by February, staff has gone through and compiled those. The Board of Commissioners has independently worked over the past several weeks to review the copies of the application, which anyone in the room who would like to see copies of the applications can go to buncomcounty.org/grants and click into the strategic partnership grant page, so you all have access to those proposals, and we'll talk about the criteria that used in reviewing those proposals, and worked independently to suggest amounts that you would like to recommend the projects be funded. So what we do today is kind of take a look at, how does that shake out when we, when we see it as a full picture of board recommendation? We have a budgeted amount that will be presented by Avril when she comes to you this evening in your formal meeting as part of budget presentation. The budget message will include a dollar amount, which is a flat from FY nineteen, which was a directive for the indication that we got last time we had one of these pre-meetings. So the idea is to leave, if possible, today's conversation with some consensus. This isn't a decision-making meeting, but if the board has consensus around what feels like a good recommended list to move forward to the budget process, we would include that in the packet for the evening's meeting for a, sorry, for June fourth, which is the next regular Board of Commissioners meeting after tonight, meaning that the public could go and see, Jasmine, did you get a copy of it coming around?
Oh, sorry.
So that the public could have access to that information and make comments. We've got a lot of members of the public who join these pre-meetings, and we know today, a lot of the folks who are with us are associated with organizations that have put in grant proposals. This isn't a decision-making meeting, but it is to kind of see if we can land on consensus. So what we will do is look together at the worksheet that's in front of you as a way to frame our conversation, and I have a copy of it on the computer so that we can make changes live and see kind of what it does to the numbers. This is a true work session where it's not a formal presentation, this is for you all to work together, and I'll offer facilitation and framing and context however I can. If questions come up where you would like to know more, many, I've been in conversation with many of you and provided more information prior to today, but if you've got a question about a project, I can make a note of that and take it back and get it for you later. So before we jump into the sheet, does anyone have any questions?
There may be some errors on the sheet.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I've got one that's missing.
Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Please point it out right away.
Share it right now.
One of you that have done, you'll need to go back and look at it, because I had an amount on there.
Did anyone spot it? The amount is missing or the project is missing?
No, the amount's missing. My number is missing.
I'm very sorry about that error, and let's get that entered right back. Do you have it in front, do you have it off the top of your head, or should I go get your sheet?
Whatever, what they asked for last year, forty.
What they received last year was forty? I'm sorry about that.
I'm surprised, I'm surprised you didn't. You're reading mine, am I right?
So I'll orient you to the sheet, since I'm flipping over to the computer, can you see that behind? Yeah. So let me type this in just real quick. Well, that's on my mind. Filter forty. There may be other errors, and if you see them, please point them out. This has been lots of cells and rows and columns, and trying to figure out how to compile this information in a way that is easy to interact with and easy to understand and helps you get through. So the sheet is organized in this way, the farthest left column on your paper is the name of the organization. The next column is the name of the project. I hid the name of the project on the sheet that's on the screen so that we can see more cells. There are a few agencies that had four in one project, YWCA and Gateway. The way that the, I'll run you across the columns at the top, the amount that the project is granted for FY twenty nineteen is listed there, next to the amount that was requested for FY twenty.
Yeah, you don't really need to go through all those columns.
Okay. I'm going to walk, I'm going to continue so that I can summarize the math that goes into the next one.
All right.
So the average board amount essentially is if a project gets to four votes or more, that column in yellow is averaging what the Board of Commissioners each independently has recommended. If it didn't hit four, or I didn't conduct that, I didn't place that average, because four is the majority, meaning that project would stand up to a majority vote if it were picked up by the board independently. So therefore, the way that the sheet is sorted from top to bottom, you have an alphabetical list of agencies or organizations with a recommended amount, and then it starts again and goes alphabetically about halfway down for those that didn't end up with the recommendation. So I feel like there's a question that took your time. One more comment that I would make is if you look down to the bottom of the page, underneath the yellow column, the total amount recommended for the average of board amounts for the projects where four or more commissioners placed an amount is a total of. I want to make sure that the sheet and the computer match up. Six. I bet you that changed when I put Belcher's number in there. See, it went up to six ninety-two, so this sheet is live, and I see that they're going to fix here the flat amount at six oh five sixty. So our new total was the adjusting of the amount, and that's sort of a good example of what. So our new total was the adjusting of the amount, and that's sort of a good example of what this exercise can look like. If we make any adjustments in any of your own columns, if you, if a commissioner wants to say, you know what, I'd like to, seeing the whole picture now and knowing what we know, when it all comes together, I'd like to adjust an amount, we could do that in your own column. You could also bring up to others an idea that we adjust an amount in the yellow column. And that will, that will change the total. So this, anytime we put a number in anyone of the cells, it will adjust that total. Six oh five, six eight zero, six hundred and five thousand, six hundred and eight dollars is the flat amount from last year. So what we have right now is eighty-six thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty-three, over what is being recommended as a budget for this set of grants.
So can you use, can you see what the percentage is of eighty-six to six ninety-two?
Yes. Eighty-six, seven, thirty-three, divided by that. Except you want a percentage. I'm carrying math in front of the crowd of people. Do I do that? Thirteen percent.
So I guess it's for discussion later, but you know, you could reduce everything about thirteen percent. There you go.
That would be one way to do it.
That would be a fair way to do it.
Well, here's one thought. The, you know, if we're not going to increase more funding for this, you know, area of community work, you know, very few groups are getting increases, right? Most people are getting kind of held where they're at or a little bit below. So one, if we're not going to put more money into this sector, I mean, one idea would be to say that none of the groups are going to get more than they got last year. Because if we took that, if we took this, the relatively small amount of increases out, then that would free up some money so that more organizations are not getting cut by as much. So we could kind of say, first, let's just try to, you know, keep consistent funding with a lot of these groups that we're, again, continuing to support because they did great stuff. And then, then it might be, I don't know, nine or ten percent that would only have to be then looked at. So that's, that's another thought as a scenario.
Do you want me to run these scenarios live?
I don't know if that's, if you're asking me to do it real quickly or not. I don't know if that's, there's...
I think there's a couple, there's a couple that weren't funded last year.
It's like this. We're looking at a sheet with numbers now that I presented.
I'm unable to hear Commissioner Frye.
Hey guys, hang on just a minute. Go ahead. I presented a sheet with numbers on it. Then we went to sheet, and the sheets had, didn't have any numbers. It just had scoring through five different branches. So now we're looking at scoring tied to this. Scoring actually ran a couple of the numbers up, caused up the scoring. And that's, that's why I like to see numbers exactly what it is. We're not seeing the numbers of the scoring.
So let me...
Yes, not the scoring.
I would like to speak to that a little bit. When we met last in the work session format, you all had asked for us to come back and bring together, bring forward a scenario or like a structure for how we could evaluate these grants. And staff did that and brought forward to commissioners a task to look at the following categories: alignment to strategic priorities, support of county core functions and services, impact and outcomes, the funding needed, leveraging sustainability in project partnerships, and proposed a way you could score it. Some commissioners chose to do that scoring and kind of came up with a percentage of a total amount of points. And some commissioners felt it was more comfortable just to do straight dollar amounts. So I worked with the three commissioners that had done the points, and we converted that into dollar amounts. And then each of those commissioners was able to look at the dollar amounts and see, does that fit with where I wanted it? It was a helpful exercise. I think what I heard, and I'll let you know if you did that, speak for it, to give yourself a sort of structure for evaluating what makes proposals strong. But in no way did the points override any dollar amount recommendations. You went through each project by project after you completed your scoring and said, is this what I'd recommend? So these, excuse me?
So three thousand dollars, thirty-four, almost thirty-five. Which one, which one is that?
Do you want to talk about that project and find out from other commissioners what led them to...
I would like to know which one it is.
Sure.
Big Ivy.
Big Ivy?
So Big Ivy, let's look at that. Big Ivy was, they were funded at thirty thousand dollars. Sorry, is that correct? Thirty thousand dollars in FY nineteen. They came in at FY twenty, they got a community fund with a request of seventy thousand. And so there were three out of the seven commissioners, when we look by name, that have recommended a funding level that is above thirty thousand. And that causes, when we average all of them, to land at thirty-three thousand.
Did you have numbers on the sheet of the paper?
What do you mean?
Well, you got three that I know that you had numbers. You got four.
Do you mean like points versus dollar amounts?
Well, I wrote dollar amounts. Other people wrote dollar amounts. What about ones that didn't write dollar amounts? Have you come up with them?
I went, I met to each, with each of the three and said, let's come up with a way to translate the dollar amounts, I mean, the points into dollar amounts. Here's a mathematical formula that could do it, and this is what it would do if we tried that. Now, look at every line, agency by agency, and see, is that too loud? If I can back up. I have a quiet voice. Look at each project by project and see if that fits with what you'd recommend. Those three commissioners were Jasmine, Amanda, and Al. Is there any summary that you would like to say about the scoring process?
You know, after looking at this, and since some of us went other ways, I don't like what I see. What I'd like for us to do is go back to the drawing board. Now that we know that we have the six hundred thousand or whatever, let us, each commissioner, go back through this and total out what we have. Because the way it is, some of us did the point, some did the other. I want to make sure we're all dancing to the same tune then.
Sure, and so that would, that would definitely be a possibility.
Well, it can be possible.
I don't like it.
I went project by project or had, or had you...
I just don't like the way it's ended up. I mean, I would like all of us to do the same thing. Let's go back. I know the amount we're dealing with, six hundred and...
Five.
Five thousand sixteen. Okay? Maybe I missed that first one. Let me go back. And if we all would come up to that total, and then we put them on the chart and see.
Do we have to come up with that?
If, if each...
Let me ask something. Al, is there, so you didn't, you didn't put in dollars when you did yours?
No, I did. Yeah, I did on one or two, yeah, but I did, see, I went with the score. I, I just don't like the way this has come up.
Do you not like, like...
And I'm not going to vote for this, so. We got to do something different.
So I do have to ask a question.
Yeah.
Are you looking at adding funding or do you want to keep it?
No, I want to keep it at the six so far, but I want to go back and figure it that way.
Can I make a suggestion on this, just in terms of the dollar amount? You know, if we, if we only adjusted for the amount of actual growth of revenue, right, the four, the four percent, that'd be about twenty-four thousand dollars. So, I mean, if we keep money, if we keep it at literally the same level, it's actually less money, because inflation...
Yeah, it is, yeah.
So I would, I would be open to increasing the amount by around twenty-four thousand dollars just to reflect, you know, the different economics of the county compared to where we were last year.
So are you looking at using some fund amounts to do that, just to be clear?
Twenty-four thousand?
Yes.
This would be six twenty-nine.
Something around there.
What's the revenue growth percent?
Thirteen percent, don't get there.
So, so what we can do then is to give you a new number, and you redo your numbers and give us a total so that we can include that in our budget for June fourth public care.
So are you saying, are you saying the four percent over what they asked for last year?
No, I'm saying that the total amount of funding that we're going to stick within for this set of work will be, instead of six oh five, will be four percent more than that.
Got it.
Yeah.
I definitely hear that it's tricky to work independently and then look at it all together. And they're adding another phase for another look might, might help us get there. One thing that we have, we'll have to be careful about is that each, if each commissioner spends that six hundred and five thousand plus revenue percent independently, we're still going to end up with a similar situation, put all our numbers together.
We do every year.
Excuse me?
We do every year. That's why this is such a train wreck.
Yeah.
And we do it, we do the same thing every...
Six years with numbers.
Every year. Yeah.
Okay, one second. Say, Hopwell?
I'd like to press pause for just a minute. One of the commissioners is saying that there's been a complete change, and other commissioners have been, it's hard for me to listen as staff.
Okay, well, let me, let me finish.
Go back to numbers.
Hang on a minute, Mike. I, I had to pull it first, okay, then you can have it. Okay, so, so I'm kind of with Commissioner Whiteside. I understand that maybe an attempt was done to do it differently, which is, which is cool. I don't have a problem with it. I just didn't really like it. Because some of the, you know, the categories, you know, weren't necessarily applicable to everybody. It didn't really fit all the, you know, all the people that were asking. Some were specific asks, you know? And so you either do that amount or you really don't do that amount because they can't get it. So it's a, it's a moving target, so, and, you know, it's just a very difficult process to do, and there's got to be a better way to do it. And that might have been a better way to say what I said than use a word treatment. But anyway, Mike, and I don't disagree with, I'm going to come back. I don't disagree with the four percent being fair.
Can you comment?
Can I, can I say something? So the four percent is twenty-five thousand dollars additional. So the new total would be six thirty-one, three sixty that you'd need to allocate. Having said that, if you put six thirty-one, three sixty, you're now sixty-one thousand dollars above your new allocated amount. That is what you need to actually allocate, is sixty-one more thousand dollars, or reduce some funding by that amount. If you want to go back and take these scores and change your numbers, you can do that. We can say, you can spread, you can tell us what would work for you. But we can be conscious that twenty-five thousand dollars additional allocation of fund balance to get to this number going into nature.
My question was, we come in here with numbers, and that's the way we've done this. I've been here for six years. You actually did a sheet at one time, and then I gave the arrow with the numbers on it. And that's what I was expecting back, is a sheet with numbers on it to do. Now, you're right, this is a train wreck.
I'm unclear if you, if you believe that if I have, if I have incorrectly written down any numbers, that is completely possible, and just let me know which ones and we'll fix it.
I, I'm sorry. I, I can't sit here and continue to hear the word "train wreck." I am sorry, Rachel. I am very upset for those words to continue to be said to you. And I apologize. I am one of the commissioners who specifically asked for a scoring system. I've spent twenty years of my career fundraising and leading nonprofit organizations, and this is best practice. Thank you for that, Rachel. Please let me finish. This is best practice. There is no equitable way, other than a scoring system, to make these painful decisions. This was agonizing, you all. You all are doing amazing work in this community. And being on the other side of this work now and looking at this was incredible and very challenging decisions to make. Were there some missteps in maybe how the scoring came out? Absolutely. But we have to say, we tried it. How can we move forward and make it better with looking at how we treat every organizational in an equitable way? So that moving forward, all organizations know, you're going to be scored and ranked on A, B, C, X, Y, Z. And I apologize, Rachel, for the way that you have just been treated for something that I specifically advocated for.
It's tricky, and the process has changed each year, and it is imperfect. And definitely, one of the things that this process does, this conversation, is takes us to talking about process instead of talking about fact and what can be done with these dollars and these investments. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me come around that, because I don't want this to appear to be anything other than what it is. You know, that train wreck is not directed at you at all. And I already, and you know that, I mean, I talked to you yesterday, or whenever it was, that is not directed at you, it's directed at how we're doing this. It's a very difficult thing. I mean, Commissioner Whiteside commented that he did not agree with the way it was done, and it's just a better way to do that. So I don't want this to, I don't want another commissioner assuming that that was directed at you, because it's not. So if you took it that way, I apologize, but I don't, I don't, I don't think you did, because we had already had conversations about, you know, the past few years on how this has been done. It's just a very difficult, it's a difficult process coming in and asking for, you know, fifty thousand dollars when, you know, some folks are okay at thirty or, you know, or thirty-five. It's just hard quantifying these numbers.
What we said we would do a couple months ago is reset the process for next year so that when we enter a new funding cycle, everybody knows exactly what to expect and how it's going to work, and we can agree on it at time. Each year, we find ourselves with the slightly different seven commissioners adjusting how the process is going to go. And so this is sort of a symptom of that. And what we need to do is figure out a workable way to get from here through July first and have a set of investments that you all feel good about.
Al?
Yeah, this has been my problem. You know, we have had, since two, this is my third time going through it. It's just not smooth, the only way we're doing, not like, you know, not, and, and I don't think, Amanda, we, this is discussion here, and we're going to disagree. And if you know me, I will, you know, I know. But my concern is, we're doing almost a four-hundred-million-dollar budget. And I have a problem when we keep wasting, not wasting, because this is an important part of what we do, but it's such a small amount of the budget, we should be able to do this a lot smoother than we're doing.
Well, the part of the issue, I mean, we, we have this conversation every year, as we've said. But the problem is, nobody's come up with some like, oh, here's the clean, easy way to get seven people with wildly divergent views all on the same page, right? So it's, it's not, you know, I don't think there is, I mean, if we really want to do something different, and, and I think for this year, we're kind of where we are, and we'll, you know, we'll, we'll get there. We'll sort, we'll sort out the differences on this. If we really want to do something different for next year, I think there's a couple of options. One, you know, we've started using, like, we have, you know, we've got, we decided to spend over three million dollars a year on early childhood education. And big complicated stuff, a lot of different separate funding proposals, and we've got a subcommittee of the commission to focus on that, work with staff, and come up with a plan and make a recommendation to the commission. We're doing the same thing on affordable housing. We have a similar thing with the school capital commission with the city and county schools. So that would be one other option, is we choose a subset of our commission to really focus on this and come up with... We can give them the budget. We can give, let me, let me finish, and then you can go.
Okay.
We would give them a budget to work with, so it's not up to them to decide how much to go spend. We'd say, for this year, here's your target, take a deeper dive on this and come back. And the rest of the commission doesn't have to agree with them. You know, we can, we can debate it more, but I think, I think that's, that's one idea. If we wanted to further kind of streamline it, we could delegate it to staff and say, staff, we want you to fully come up with recommendations on, on, you know, here's, you know, you know our priorities. You know a lot of these long-term partnerships, and we can delegate it to them to come up with recommendations. So to, in my mind, if we really want to try to do something more streamlined, those are potential options to think about in the future. But that means kind of us letting go of it a little bit, too, right?
Another thing, since we're brainstorming as we could...
Mike, Mike wanted to go next.
Go ahead, Chad.
Thanks. Another option would be sort of using a participatory budgeting model and opening it up for community input regarding how, say, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was allotted. Other communities across the state are sort of starting to use that with parts of their budget. So that's something I'd be interested in exploring as a third option. And Mike, I'll go back to you, but I, after that, I'd like to go back and in the interest both of our time today and also our timeline between now and June eighteenth, is reach some agreement about how we're going to move forward with this year's process that folks can move with.
I think we can do that.
Well, we've got a, we've got a target number now. I think it's, I don't hear anybody screaming about too much. So why don't we, why don't we, why don't we look at the numbers where we're at? And this is a good discussion. Let's think about it. And I think we're just going to have to, I would suggest we... I mean, I don't think we should start from scratch, but why don't we start from... we should start from scratch, but why don't we start from kind of where we're at and realizing these numbers are going to be, these numbers are going to be around. So, now that, now that I've kind of seen where everybody else is, I have a few thoughts on things I might want to, you know, uh, adjust a little bit up or down. So, why don't we all do that and give feedback to Rachel on this?
By a certain.
By what date?
We love it before June fourth, which would be our.
Before June fourth.
Yes, their need to know, our partners need to understand where they are, what's being recommended of funding, so they can be here for the public hearing. So, if we can have it by.
It would be, we would publish the twenty-ninth, June fourth.
The twenty-ninth.
Yeah, we need it by the twenty-eighth.
That's, all right.
Can we get a digital copy of this?
Yes, and if you're working independently, there may be a need for some reconciliation because, you know, if Amanda's, if Commissioner Edwards is working on her numbers and Commissioner Whiteside's is working on his numbers, we don't know what everyone's bottom line is going to look like until we add it all back together. So, we will need clear direction from you on what to do if that number, if the average is above or below our target. Furthermore, I'd like to just check your, um, did it make sense to, to only put a dollar recommendation in when there were four commissioners with the number? Do we want to keep that rationale on the sheet? If, if fewer than four commissioners recommended funding, I didn't average it as a, as a proposed grant, do we want to keep that methodology?
Well, to me, the ones that look at, to me, the ones that got to the threshold of three, I'd want to take another look at, just as we're.
You know, I kind of glanced at that myself and, and I don't, and it, you know, it's probably pretty close where it's at. I mean, I was like, uh, Mr. Farrar was saying, I was, I was going down through there and seeing, okay, is there anybody, is anybody that got three? That there's.
Two, community action opportunities and the council on aging.
We've got very close. There was almost three million dollars worth of grant requests to go. And for each commissioner to do their work, whether or not you approached it differently from one another and look at your dollar amounts by project and give me those figures to put in, for it to have come in as close to the amount available budgeted as it did was a surprise to me. So, I, it feels like we, we are nearly there. You all can make your adjustments, see what, if there was a number that either didn't get written down correctly as you remember it, we can go back and triple check because there was transcribing to create this. And/or if there's any suggestions that you'd like to change, now that you've seen the full picture, we'll probably still land pretty close, especially when we add that additional twenty-five thousand.
Rachel.
Yes, sir.
Question. Yeah, the ally, I understand, and it basically takes in the group that was originally in there. What if we just take this sheet, all of us, and put the number in that we want in that area? That would then hand it back to you one more time.
Yep, that's exactly.
That's what we're asking. Yeah. That's what we're asking. I will tell you, I know people thought it was a train wreck. This was actually a really great process.
Y'all got to quit using that word.
He wants to, he wants to.
Pull that word.
But it was actually a really good process because when you look at this, to take almost three million dollars of selling grants and come to the highest I'm here with is eight hundred, I thought y'all did phenomenal work. So, I was telling Rachel, I was pleasantly surprised how easy it was. So, to hear that was kind of surprising to me that y'all felt that way. So, we need to regroup and get where we need to be for next year.
So, the reason I said that, and we got to talk about it.
Last time, last time.
Don't bring that train on the track no more, um, is that it has been very difficult for six years. Okay? It's not, it hasn't been very difficult. Anybody that's been here knows that this has been very difficult. Commissioner Whiteside was concerned about, you know, his numbers and how ever, when I look at the, at the center column to come up that close. It's pretty phenomenal. But there's two things on there that, that, there's two things on there that I had mentioned to, to Rachel that, um, and when I say it, what I said, what I mean is there's got to be a better way to do some of these. There's two on there that I particularly, um, like. And one is the de-review community centers. I think community centers need to be handled differently, but the, the construction of community center, Center for De-Review, there is no question that there is a need there. Should that be a partnership between the county and the city? I think so. But there is a definite need there. Should that, that size of a request fall in this? I don't think it should. Okay? So, but I think it should be looked at. The other one too is the Abbott House, four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, which is doing phenomenal work and changing lives that has mothers and children together that, you know, addiction issues. It's by all measures that I have heard and the community has done very well. So, mine is things that used to be paid for in HHS and now it's out. It comes in here. And so, it needs to be looked at. It needs to be, um, in my opinion, it needs to be funded. I don't know how, but it was, it was funded through HHS before. And, and again, it hasn't, if you, if you haven't seen it, it's, it's amazing. It's been very successful. So, anyhow, that's two big requests that fall into grants, which tend to be, tend to be lower, lower amounts, but we're going to have to look at it a different way to do them.
Sometimes this process helps us learn about community projects that county can be a partner in. Lee Walker Heights was, this was the door that that application came in. And the project that was another, uh, it was considered through a separate process and funded through a separate process. So, we can certainly take direction from that board about staying in communication with many of the projects throughout here differently if they don't get picked up as part of this particular grant.
If you only got six hundred and five thousand dollars, then you got a four hundred and forty-four thousand dollar request, which is no chance. So, it's got to be dealt with differently, especially if you're basically pulling funding.
Right, so one of the things we'll look at for next year's cycle would be about community impact, to your point, if they are doing good work and we can justify that. One thing we will look at, which is why we talked about scoring this year. So, you score about impact, not just that we like that, but how do you, what is the impact to the community and how can we reflect that? I see Commissioner Shaven said, but you do have to start on that level so you are more accountable and more transparent, how you spend the taxpayer dollars and what impact you're making in your communities. So, that's one of the things we will look at for next year as we go forward. But for this year, if you can take the sheet, mark it up with what you want. We can give you clean sheets or give you the outline version, so you can give us some input so we can get to that number that you just created today.
And so, you know, and so if there are some things that you, that are not currently funded that you just like, it is, you super care about, I think your job is to convince, and it does have four votes now, your job is to convince someone to add it to the list, right? Because I think we need to have.
I just teed up two of them.
Well, that's, that's, that's fine. I'm saying between now and the next meeting, you know, people can talk more with others. They need to have four votes to be funded. But at the same time, you know, our, our, part of our job is to reduce funding by about sixty thousand dollars. Right? So, so that's kind of our work. So, it's, it's more minuses than positives, right? So, it's, it's less fun, but it's what we've got to work with.
But you don't know what your target amount is and you can structure your rest. We have that number, but now that you have it tonight, you can change it again.
All right. Thank, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Rachel. Um, all right, we got one more item to talk about. So, between now and Wednesday next, Tuesday next week.
Tuesday next week.
It's the deadline.
Do we know, does that give us enough time to make changes once we get them all in?
Do you want to say close the business Monday?
Mondays are holidays. So, this is Friday.
You all won't be delivering together.
Yeah.
You shouldn't take us. Rest of the week.
Well, this, this, we've done this week then.
So, if we can get that Friday, then we can have it ready to publish and the nonprofits can know.
So, before you leave this meeting, between this meeting and Tuesday's meeting, I'll get a new copy. Your hand has the corrected forty thousand that was missing, so I'll go back to Commissioner Belcher, has the increased total available, the, the fourth point with the revenue growth percentage added, um, so that you can do your work on paper if you want. And I will also send it here in boxes so you can do, if you'll give it to me, I feel like that gives staff enough time to get back to you on what, what we've collected because again, working independently, we put it all together, um, in time to have it published Friday, twenty-nine, part of the public comment. So, for those in the room, they, they should still be able to expect to see it published through that June fourth meeting.
All right, thank you.
Uh, one other thing I would like to see is we have a gut for next year. So, I think we had a car crash here, so ain't no more train wreck. Is going back to like seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, because some of these that wasn't given last year, we was wondering why they was not. So, we was thinking, hey, this is our first year or whatever it's that. I'd like to go back three, four years to see, well, why did we fund them eight straight years and then all of a sudden we didn't and now we're not funding them now?
If we want to look back at last year and see which commissioners voted for each project to get the four, we could have that.
That's, but see, that's, that's the problem. That's why I don't really like it. You know, it's like I look, if I look at this, this list and if I'm sitting out in the audience, somebody, somebody in that organization can go and look, go, Elcher didn't support us at all.
Right.
Well, that's not the case. That's not the case. There's only a certain amount of, amount of money. And so, it's, it's.
All right, we need to, we need to move on. So, uh, next topic is economic development. I think Rachel's still part of this and Michael and Tim.
Get out of my seat. Stay right there, but I'm going to switch gears. This is a technical, uh, item and I'm starting our economic development agenda item because it, there's a segue between what we just talked about and what Tim's going to cover in a second. So, there are different things that counties can fund, um, and we make in each of those strategic partnerships, um, grant proposals and align them with our, I see Heather Hodg nodding, um, align them with our budgetary functions. So, when you look at your budget, you see different functions like human services, culture and recreation. One of the budgetary functions is, um, physical and economic development. And within that, we needed to identify if any of the projects are economic development, if counties are going to fund economic development, the state statutes are very prescriptive or restrictive about how. And so, it's one of the things that we do differently when we're funding economic development is a hearing that's noticed in the newspaper for ten days. And another thing we do with it, with, with economic development funding is make sure that it meets the other aspects within the statute around job creation, et cetera. So, there are two projects on this list. Carolina Small Business Development Fund and Center for Agriculture and Food Entrepreneurship, which is Blue Ridge Food Stores. Both of those projects, um, we identified that they meet the criteria for economic development. We've worked with those partners to talk about, um, their work and the impacts and the performance measures that would be associated with it.
And sort of, sort of as an opposite to that, what, what I first did was go through the, the general statutes for taxing authority. I mean, is there something in one fifty-three, eight, one forty-nine that we can hang our hat on to fund those groups if the board chose to fund them? That was based on their description of their work and their history of their work, their website and just looking here and there. So, if it didn't fall there in their description, their efforts were really economic development, that's where we fell back to this. It would have to go through that process.
So, we started the, um, at, at the broader set, narrowed it down and there are two that would be the criteria for economic development. So, what we're saying is that we will be including these two projects in the next round of economic development hearings. And so, that's a really specific process. We are, Michael and Tim, um, write up these notices and issue them within the paper so that the public is made aware that the board may allocate up to a certain amount of funding for a project. And so, when you hear the next round of economic development hearings, which are what you would expect, the, the companies that are funded with economic development incentives, you will also hear two that are strategic partnership grants. And so, you might not expect those to have come in that way because the strategic partnerships are a very broad and open-ended, uh, grant program as long as it's a, a community-based nonprofitization eligible. So, um, that's how these two came to be in what you're going to hear in the economic development hearings, which it will be on your agenda for June and fourth.
So, so it would just be hearing on one or both, which other ones got funded to that?
At this point, we wrote the ad as if both of them were funded. It allows you to fund them up to the maximum of what your request was. We could, if we have the information, I'm, and I'm thinking that we won't because we have to send it to the newspaper to, or, nevermind. We wanted to leave your options open so that you could make, you could fund either of those projects up to their total request if the board decided to do that.
I got the agricultural one, so.
Carolina Small Business Development Fund. It's about five or six down from the top.
All right, is that it?
We've already granted down one time.
That is the only piece of economic development that is related to strategic partnerships. And there are a couple of other economic development hearings that are going to occur on that same night. And so, usually what we do in the next three meetings is let you know what's coming two weeks out. And Tim will tell you the rest of the ones that are going to be on.
So, in addition, you know, the, the law requires that we do a public hearing for any appropriation, uh, in a budget, uh, for anything economic development. So, what's going to happen on June fourth is we will read off, um, anything that's in the budget for economic development, which will include, uh, economic development agreements you've already approved. So, GE, Linnamar, Jacob Holm. All of these have to be announced in a public hearing. And it's not something we've done historically, uh, but I wanted you to be aware of it because we will have that public hearing, we'll open it up.